Do, do, do. We got a flag?
Three behind ya.
Okay. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. America. And for which we stand. One nation, one nation. For God. And for justice. Justice.
Alright. Uh, we're gonna take a roll call. I'll call your name, just say you're here and raise your hand, please. Teresa Prestigiacomo.
Here.
Jennifer Williams. Dame Schmid.
Here.
Mary Lou Huddleston.
Here.
Julie Izzo.
Here.
Robert Maxwell.
Here.
Hannah Stack.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Hongo?
Yes, sir.
You are still presenting your screen in case.
Yeah, it's taken awhile.
Okay, thanks.
It got stuck trying to get off that. Okay. Tenure celebration. Is there anything for tenure celebration?
This is Rhone.
Sandy. Do you have? I apologize. Are those letters attached to something in the board packet?
No, they're.
Thank you. I, I apologize. Everybody said they were gonna be here.
Oh. I, Mrs. Rhone, I am ready.
Oh, you're ready? Good, Crystal. Good to see you.
I'm Q. Alright, I will start first with Mrs. Erica Siri. And dear Board of Education, I would like to recommend Mrs. Erica Siri for tenure as a classroom teacher. Mrs. Siri was hired in 2017 and serves as our sixth grade math teacher. Mrs. Siri holds permanent certification in pre-K through six with early childhood annotation, special education K through 12, and mathematics seven through 12. She obtained her Bachelor's of Science in Education, Early Childhood Education, in 2002 from SUNY Fredonia, and a Master's of Science in Education, Special Education, in 2003 from SUNY Potsdam. Mrs. Siri quickly evolved as a valued member of our DCS team. Her knowledge and expertise in mathematics, as well as her dedication to working with students with diverse learning needs, serves an integral role in preparing our sixth graders for their later work in high school. Mrs. Siri's extensive knowledge of the mathematics curriculum blended with her eagerness to learn new technological and instructional strategies is an asset to our district. Her personal drive and dedication to our students makes Mrs. Siri a perfect fit for our middle school students. She understands the importance of developing personal connections with students and does so with humor, sincerity, and professionalism. Students genuinely enjoy her class and appreciate her interactive and engaging approaches to learning. One of Mrs. Siri's greatest strengths is her patient, sincere, and positive rapport with students and staff. She understands the importance of collaboration, both to make academic strides with her students and to enhance relationships in the school community. In the fall of 2019, Mrs. Siri stepped in to Mrs. Primo with her maternity leave. In addition to her role as a sixth grade mathematics teacher, Mrs. Siri assumed duties associated with the chairperson for special education to maintain services and special education needs of our students. She carefully maintained duties of both positions to ensure all students had opportunities to learn in accordance to their abilities. She is a leader on the grade team and never backs down from a challenge. Her rich experience of working with students with learning challenges has supported our team's momentum to collaborate in the best interest of students. She is an avid learner, always eager to re, to use research to support her own personal growth and instruction. Mrs. Siri's instructional expertise blends compassion and high behavioral and academic expectations. Both her students and colleagues value her work in and out of the classroom. Mrs. Siri embraces the challenges of working with young adolescents and is an asset to our DCS team. She genuinely cares about the well-being and success of her students. And it is my great honor to recommend Erica Siri for tenure in the Dalshal Central. So congratulations to Mrs. Siri.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Hongo, can we get a motion granting that tenure?
Don't move.
You wanna do a motion on everyone? Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, who made that motion?
Mr. Maxwell made, oh, okay.
Jennifer Williams.
It wasn't me.
Congratulations, Erica.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Erica. And Mrs. Rhone, I also have Mrs. Primo's letter for Mrs. Petre. Would you prefer to read that or would you like me to read that?
No, you go ahead.
Dear Mrs. Rhone and School Board members, it is wi, with great pleas that I recommend Mrs. Dion Petre for her tenure at Dalshal Central School. As a reading specialist at the elementary level, Mrs. Petre is innovative and engaging. She is passionate about her work and understands the cognitive, developmental, and social emotional needs of her students. Mrs. Petre's lessons promote enthusiasm for reading and learning. Her students take pride in their accomplishments. Their excitement is palpable. Mrs. Petre strives to know her students' interests both in and out of the school setting. She takes time to have conversations with her students about the things that are genuinely important to them. In her role, Mrs. Petre works collaboratively with classroom teachers at multiple grade levels. She is an advocate for students and a valued team member. Dalshal Central School is fortunate to have such a devoted, compassionate educator. And Mrs. Primo recommends Mrs. Petre for tenure without reservation.
Motion for Mrs. Petre.
All moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And congratulations to Dion.
Congratulations, Dion.
And Mrs. Rhone, I'm going to scoot out and I will be back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye. See you later.
Can I explain? I'd like to explain what Crystal's doing. She was asked to be on the board of the Community Schools Consortium. So their board meetings are the same time as our board meeting, so she's gonna be in and out of ours.
Nice.
She's a smut string.
Was that it for tenure?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't have the list. Okay, motion to approve the minutes, March 17th, 2020, regular meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who made that motion? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve the April 15th special meeting.
All moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Finance committee meeting minutes, motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No correspondence this month, uh, financial approvals. Any questions on the bills?
Yes, I have a couple.
Okay.
Um, they're all on, uh, warrant A44, A44. I'm gonna try to sum them, sum them up as quick as I can. Uh, I saw the two big, um, bills there for the elevator, uh, re, uh, service and for the gym doors. I just wanted to make sure that, um, well, I'm sure they're, you know, they're antiquated as it is, but what's their status, their in, their integrity, structural integrity? Are they good to go for a few more years?
Um.
That, you can, I can wait.
You wanna talk about gym doors?
I can wait on that.
Well, you have to realize they're both 34 years old, so.
I understand that. And we just spent 18,000, so I'm wondering if that's gonna be, get us by for quite awhile.
Oh, yeah, those, the gym doors, can you, everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
The gym doors that we just purchased is under, um, Schedule N, which is for the New York Safe Act. So that's 100% reimbursed up to 35,000 for the following year. So that money that you see us spending, we get back next year.
Okay.
Um, we had to buy those doors for Gym One, the old gym here on the high school side. Actually, I believe they call it the new gym. Um, because the wooden doors would no longer lock. And in our safety plan, that's where everybody's supposed to go in case of a lockdown or a lockout. Which one is it, Lynn? Lockdown or? So i, in order for us to be safe and keep our students and staff safe, we need to make sure those doors lock.
Okay. Thank you. And I just had, uh, two more, and that was on the, uh, same warrant, A44, page five and page six. In regards to, uh, upstate servile policy and the House of Good Shepherd. Uh, will we have to, um, continue on with those payments till the end of the year also?
Yep.
I believe so. I have not heard different. The upstate servile policy, yes. The House of Good Shepherd was an adjustment for prior year.
Okay. Uh, we don't have any students going there now, do we? Nope.
We do not. We do not have anybody at the House of Good Shepherd currently.
Alright, I just wanted, and then, of course.
They're still receiving services, Mr. Schmid. They're still receiving their specialized services, just like we're communicating with our students every day. They're also getting their education virtually.
Oh, okay, alright. And, uh, of course, the Little Falls Fund of Bus Corporation, I can't remember their new name, apologize. We're still paying them also till the end of the year?
Yeah, that's part of the pandemic that's currently going on. Um, our lawyers have informed us, any busing agreements continue to be paid at this time.
Okay. I thought that's what you said. Okay, thank you. I'm done.
You're welcome.
Okay, treasures report. Any questions on the treasures report?
I just have one. Down at the bottom where our accounts balances, count, balances. Will we see that, uh, capital fund, uh, um, figure going up with our, um, monies for the heating system?
Yes, that, what you see there, the nine, 9,700, that's left over from our, um, small, uh, emergency project. So what we did was we had taken money and put it there to, to, um, cover those expenses. That's what was left over from that project. So then when we get the new money for our $1 million project, it will go there.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, motion to accept the bills and the treasure report is accepted.
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, budget review.
Um, I'm sorry, I haven't prepared anything for you guys. Um, as you all are aware, by now, I'm sure, um, with the COVID-19 pandemic, um, our state aid has been reduced significantly, significantly from the February aid that we were expect, that we were estimating and basing our budget on. Um, so I'm gonna be asking the board to please, um, to look at cutting possibly 400 to 500,000 out of the budget that we discussed last month. Um, I have not went ahead and done this yet because I'm waiting to talk to you guys about this. Um, it's not looking good. Um, they cut our aid by $383,000. And then what they did was they added in some federal cares restoration money. However, on top of that, the governor has, um, stated that we can see these quarterly adjustment periods of our state aid in our bu, budget year of 2021. So in order to prepare for that, um, we can set up a plan for, uh, to use reserves as needed. Um, but I really think, looking at the budget, looking at our five-year plan, the best option for DCS right now is to try to cut 400 to 500,000 out of the number that we used in March. So. Lynn, would you like to add anything to that?
Um. Specifically how much money. We're, we're looking at ERS and TRS, which is our employee retirement system and our teacher retirement system. Those, um, payments to them are driven by the stock market. And because the stock market has been struggling, uh, since the coronavirus pandemic, we're expecting those payments to go up for the school district, um, by 50% next year, or to double, actually. Uh, so we're looking at 9% of salaries going up to 18% of salaries. And then, um, what was the other one, Jess? 16% of salaries going up to 32% of salaries. So we've got a long way to go when we've, we're going to have to pay those ERS and TRS bills next year. That, along with the fact that, um, our state aid will probably remain flat for five or six years now. That's what the experts are telling us, to not expect any more money from the state. We're hoping to get money from the federal government this year. I don't think we'll get money from the federal government next year. Uh, so we really have to plan for our future because it's a pretty dire situation. It's a dire situation all over the country.
As I'm looking at Jess's report, there are three, um, aspects to this, um, assessment period. And the second one coming up, uh, in May, May 1st to June 30th. Now, I know we're getting pretty close to the deadline for budget, um, votes. But is it, do you think it'll be worse if we waited till the next meeting to make this decision? Or do you think it's best to make it now with the second assessment and third assessment still coming?
We still have the first assessment coming. April 30th is the first one.
Yes, but the second is May 1st to June 30th. And then the third is from Jill, well, that's past our budget, but the second one is still coming. It hasn't come yet.
We can't wait till that because we'll have to pass the budget before then because our school year begins July 1st.
Alright, so what I'm asking is, do you think it's gonna be any worse than this?
I would plan, I would plan for the worst. I would plan for the worst.
Um, you know, our budget vote has been, um, pushed back. There, the government, the New York State government has said that no budget vote until at least June 1st, so we haven't gotten a new budget vote date yet. Um, so with that being said, you know, there's a lot of pre-work and reporting to the state that has to be done after you guys adopt official budget. So I would ask the board to, um, let me know as soon as possible, and maybe we can get a special meeting where you guys review and adopt the budget, um, on or before May 5th, that's a Tuesday. Um, that way we can really sit down and go through it line by line. If you, if you'd like, I can do like how I did last March, or I'm sorry, um, last month in March, we did like, uh, over 5% look at each line to tell you kind of what was added to that line. Um, I'd be happy to do that, review it like that, and then you guys can adopt it, but I, I can't do anything now because I have not cut, um, anything out of the budget from March because I, we've been kind of, um, waiting to hear more information and all we keep hearing is how uncertain everything is. Um, so, I mean, you guys can, of course, tell me what you wanna do, but that, that's what I suggest.
So we're definitely gonna have to do it on a special meeting. Um, just a matter if they put out a timeline for us or not this week. Um, governor said on Sunday, you could see up to 50% cut in school aid. Yesterday, he said 20%, so I would expect some additional cuts off of what he's already cut, but, uh.
And that 20%, just so everybody knows, kind of figure, like a money number to that 20% for us is $2.6 million.
Either one of those figures is devastating for us.
That, those are my exact words.
I mean, we gotta, we gotta make a, a plan so Jessica could start working on it, and then we can have a special meeting, um, once she's got it pared down some. And then ultimately, the state's gonna have to give us a date for a vote or some kind of directive on how to, how to proceed with, uh, implementing a budget prior to June 30th, I would think. Um, but we gotta have a plan somewhere as a start, you know, talk about where we can cut. Um, Jessica said cut 500,000 and then, uh, use, um, reserves to kind of offset it and hope for the best. Hopefully, the federal government comes through and gives the state some money and they push that on to us.
We're also in a unique position because we're one of the two schools in the state that was on an austerity budget, which means our state aid was not increased very much from, was not increased at all from last year.
Yeah, there's only two. There's us and a school in Long Island.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're, we're probably worse off in general than some other schools would have done. Well, B.
Especially since we already went through a year where we made cuts that were very difficult to make. So to have to go back through and do this again for every single one of us, it's beyond devastating.
Right.
But we need to be able to open the school doors and to be honest with you, I think next year, we're gonna be sitting here and it's gonna be much worse.
Well, I'd entertain a motion to get Jess started on what she thinks is the best route for us. If anybody would back that up, and if we see that as we go along through the rest of the school year, if anything drastically changes, probably not for the best or worse, then maybe we may have to revisit this decision. Is that acceptable?
I agree. Can make a motion on something that we have not thoroughly discussed in executive session first.
Well, I haven't, we're not making a motion.
Okay.
Um, Jessica, what is the date that you have to get your state aid planning into the state?
Um, right now, the date is April 27th.
That's not gonna happen.
Um, no, I had a phone call with, um, Questor State Aid and the other business managers in our tri-county area. We did a tri-county meeting the other day. And they said that we probably won't see that date change, but that we will get probably a, um, uh, what do I wanna say? They're not going to, um, you know, we're not gonna get in trouble for not submitting because everybody's in the same boat. Nobody has a budget right now. Most, most business officials are getting their budgets voted or adopted by their board on the 28th. Um, so even they'll be later than the 27th.
But that's, um, before we even get the first look-back period.
Right.
Not the bet, a budget before that, before we even know what the first round is?
Right, that's the date that's for, um, the one report that I have to submit to the state is April 27th. That's why they're saying that's not realistic, and they're probably not going to change that date, but there's probably been, there not gonna be a repercussion for not submitting because, because they know that no one is getting a budget ready. Most people are considering, um, seeing what that first adjustment looks like and then making a plan from there. Um, but the timeline is just off compared to when reporting's due and when we have to get things done to when that first look-back period might end, because even though it stops on April 30th, they have 10 days after that to discuss or, um, you know, try to change somebody's mind about it, I don't know.
Jess, uh, Jess, how long does it? Jess, how long does it take you to put this together?
The, the budget?
Yes.
Well, I have it built based on what we went over in March. Um, you know, if you wanted to pick out the 400 to 500,000 then, that I'm suggesting, then I would just need to know where we're going to make those adjustments cut. And then, once I go from there, probably a couple of days.
But there is, there is a report, Jess, what I'm trying to get at here, is there is a report that I had given the board the May 5th deadline for, that we had to have those figures to you because you needed time to prepare that budget for another deadline, correct?
There's publications that we have to send out. Um, there's there's a lot. There's, Sandy has to do some stuff, um, I'm trying to find mine.
It was your tax report card that I'm talking about.
Yep, that's the, that's the 427 one.
Oh. Okay.
So let's see. Yep, so we have to do the, it's all, the timeline is all based on days set back from the vote date. That's why they can't give us a timeline yet. But, I mean, you have the property tax report card that we have to do. You have, I have to do the administrator's salary disclosure to the public. Um, I have to prepare packets for all the libraries and, um, the website to get out so that the public is well aware of the budget and have, um, backup to the, you know, vote. They have more detail. There's just a lot that goes into, um, presenting the budget before the budget hearing, even before the budget hearing. So I, we do need to get moving. I don't wanna rush you, but at the same time, we have to set a date on when we, um, adopt the budget just so that we know that we're, um, gonna be on time for this stuff.
Sorry. That was me. Well, we, here, here's the problem. This is where we, this is the year of uncertainty for everyone and everything. They could come out with a budget date, a vote date tomorrow. We don't know. We were expecting it yesterday, didn't get it, haven't seen it today. Maybe we'll get it tomorrow. Once we get it tomorrow, that timeline starts. So we can't leave it till May 15th because we might miss that timeline.
Lynn, with your superintendent meetings, what are other schools doing?
They're preparing their budget with cuts.
But have they, are they finished in their preparation?
Um, I haven't asked that question, but they're not, when I asked them what's happening in their school districts, they were very specific in what they were cutting.
So I think we need to make a decision on what we're gonna cut to try to get down where we can, uh, sustain this. Um, I think you're gonna see health insurance premiums go up for our district a lot too, just because of, um, everything that's going on. Health insurance companies are spending more money. So, and I mean, my feeling is anything that we thought about putting back in that was ancillary that we used to have, that was cut, we gotta keep it out still going forward.
There could, um, probably wanna have a discussion about building use next year. Some, I've been reading that some superintendents are deciding that their buildings will close and won't be open for public use next year because that's such an expense for maintenance and supervision. So that's another thing that we could, that's one thing we could think about doing is not having the community be able to use the school. There's no great answer. They're all terrible answers. Um, but I will remind you that as we went through this, and I think it's worse for us than any other school district that we work with because obviously, we went through this last year. And we certainly weren't expecting this this year. We had planned for this year, and we were getting through, and we were doing a good job. And the cuts we had made were, were sustaining us. Not the case anymore. Um, so we have, and I have, I just wanna remind everybody, the same thing I said last year. Now, we have cut everything. We have cut supplies. We have cut equipment. We have cut maintenance. We have cut everything across the board in the school district. The only way we're going to find this kind of money is through salaries.
I didn't hear what you said, Mrs. Rhone.
The only way we're going to find that, the kind of money we need to cut is through salaries.
So I apologize for the bad news. I mean, last, last month in March, we were looking good, like Lynn said. Everything was on track. We were getting I mean, last, last month in March, we were looking good, like Lynn said, everything was on track. We were getting.
Us much money because most of, all of our field trips are through. And um art and ed, um arts and education or science and education, so we're reimbursed, uh you know. Probably ninety percent for all those field trips. Another thing you could look at is busing. I mean, do you wanna extend your busing? Um, your transportation. I don't think that's gonna gain you much money. But it might stop us from having to purchase more buses in the future. Or as many buses in the future and it might help with the bus driver shortage that we have now. But it's not going to give you, it's not gonna give you a big bang for your buck this year.
Do you think we should talk about this in executive session as Jennifer suggested before we make a decision?
Well, if we're going to talk about specific personnel, we can't do it in open session.
Okay.
But all the, all the other budget stuff has to be talked about.
Correct.
In open session.
So we had put back in driver's ed, this is what Jessica, Jessica, please interrupt me when I miss something. We had put in money for dr, to reinstate driver's ed. We had put money in for some new furniture or um. Software for like a twenty first century to actually start doing some uh blended learning, which now we're, we're doing perfectly blended. What else do we have? We do, oh, we put in some uh elementary summer school, which we'll most likely have to take out.
Would there be enough savings in another retirement incentive to do any good?
Uh, I don't think we had, we tried that last year and people weren't interested in that. I think we also need to talk about, and I'm so glad I'm sitting in my office, that I can't have people come at me right now. This is not my favorite thing to say. It's my least favorite thing to say, but I think we have to look at pre, pre-K. Every other school district gets grants and money to run their um pre-K programs. We do not. We have, we have um funded those one hundred percent through the district. And I have already contacted Herkimer County Head Start. To see if we would be eligible to have a Head Start program come back in here. If you'll remember. Um, I'm going to guess at five years ago, maybe six years ago, we had a Head Start program. And that program was through Herkimer County and Herkimer County. Fulton County, thank you. Was through Fulton County. And that program was told by the state they had to cut a hundred thousand dollars from their program. And unfortunately, the Doggville program was exactly what they needed to cut, so they just walked out on us and said, we're done. We're not doing this for you anymore. So that is when we started our four-year-old pre-K program. Unfortunately, we didn't apply for a grant at that time, which we should have applied for a universal pre-K grant. And, because that is what other school districts are doing now. We cannot apply for a universal pre-K grant anymore. They are not handing them out anymore. And the grants they are handing out for pre-K are for only new programs. So since we already have an established program now, we are not eligible for any of the grants. So we are funding a hundred percent of our pre-K program, unlike any other school in our component BOCs or probably in the state.
And we don't get any state aid, is that correct?
Nothing, absolutely nothing. Um, so Head Start was ninety, ninety-five percent sure. They looked at our demographics and they thought absolutely we um. Our economy is at the, the point where we're at the level that they would be able to put a program in here. Um, they've already written that grant. And we were not included in it. However, she told me that um there, once the grant is approved. They can always make swit, they can always switch things around, so um she feels absolutely sure. As long as we could fill up a classroom. I said, we can fill up probably two classrooms. So she said, as long as you can fill up a classroom, I can pretty much guarantee that we'll be there with a Head Start program for you. Pretty much guaranteed. That's what I got. Um, so she's not working on that on her end. And if we were to shut down our four-year-old pre-K now, bring a Head Start program in. If there were grants in the future that were for, that were for schools that did not have an existing program. We would then hopefully be eligible for those. I have Mary Klein, who's uh BOCs, she runs the um. Pre-K services throughout our BOCs. She's check, she's looking at past grants to see if. Uh recipients, you know, had only had it, had lost a program for one year and if they were awarded a program. So that's still a big uncertainty too, whether we would be able to have one of those grants. So ninety percent sure we can have a Head Start program. I don't, I can't even put a percentage on if we can get a grant the year after this for our own program. Um, but that's what would happen if we had to close down four-year-old pre-K.
How much money would we save if we closed down the four-year-old pre-K? A hundred thousand?
So Jessica, I think it was, it was um.
An eighty?
About one hundred and forty thousand dollars with a, with a teacher. And a TA and we would be, we wouldn't be one of the bus drivers and have a bus route.
Right.
Yep. About a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, the other thing that you would probably want to think about is not um. Transporting our pre-K students. Uh, lots of schools do not transport their pre-K students and that's a savings for us there if we decide not to do that.
Well, that's included in that one forty because you're taking a bus route out of it.
Correct, take, correct.
Yep.
But I'm saying if you didn't make a change and you took the transportation out. Those are our, our recommendations along with, with staff layoffs.
Well, as bad as it is, I think that. We're proud, my opinion is that we're gonna have to cut pre-K because we get no state aid on that. That's a hundred percent out of our. General fund budget. Um, but that's.
It's a luxury that we can't afford.
And it's, but it's only, and the reality is that's still only a fifth of the money we gotta come up with.
Right.
Based on current numbers.
You know, we also need to think about. Kids are gonna be probably without a half a year of school when they come back in September. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do things totally differently. We're. We don't even know what next year is going to look like in any school district, let alone do we know how much money we're gonna have. So taking away staff is not the ideal situation. But we cut everything last year, including staff that we possibly could.
Well, the only other options are to cut um programs, but what do you cut to save another four hundred thousand dollars? You're not enough to cut. Because you still need the same amount of teachers for core classes.
Correct. You could cut your college classes and that would free teachers up for, to be able to teach more subjects, so maybe we could have um. Some teacher cut, maybe one teacher cut at the high school level. I, I don't know. Um, but that's not a good option. That's, that's a program where our kids, some of our kids are getting, you know, almost their full associate's degree. Uh, for free. And it's a great program here and that would be, that would be a send to cut that with care as teachers, care to educate kids.
Well, there are, there are no good options.
No.
None of the options are good, but we gotta do something so that. We can pay the bills because it doesn't help us if we got people working here and we can't pay them.
You have to remember that the tax cap in general for every school is kind of limits uh. The amount of money you can get and your costs go up more than the tax cap every year. It's, it's gonna go up by the other school eventually, a lot.
You know, in our, our school district is, you know, our people are not, are not wealthy people. So you don't, they, they just can't afford. We, we had a lot of luxuries the last, the last how many years? And we, we hired, we hired when we shouldn't have and we, we sustained that hiring with our savings account. And now we don't have, now we don't, we do not have that money to, to give us a cushion, cushion. Um, some school districts are gonna have a cushion here and they can say, well, we got a cushion. You know, we're, we're using some of it, but we don't have a whole lot to use. And let's not, not forget, we have an awful lot of things that need to be repaired in the school building. And we're looking towards small projects every year. We have a elementary school that the electrical system is tapped out. We have no more. Um, no way to get any more electric in there. Um, we're getting our heaters done, which thank, thankful to the community that they're allowing us to do that. But those, those things are gonna keep popping up and we're gonna need to put some money in, in a capital reserve so we can get. Some small things done without taxing our, our uh community again.
I think we have to make these hard decisions. And uh like you say, if uh we have to drop uh pre-K for the four-year-olds. That's what we gotta do to sustain the, the body of this uh organization. And if we have to drop our College Now classes. I think we have to do this. It's, it's very distasteful, but I think that you have to, have to do it now before.
Well, College Now is not in my recommendation.
It isn't?
No, I was just, I was just saying things that could be cut. No.
I know, but when you, when you say.
In my recommendation, I am recommending some staff cuts. Which we cannot talk about in open session. I am recommending pre-K. And the um driver's ed, summer school and the twenty first century learning furniture. This will probably be over next year. As we sit here next year, I. I hope and pray that we will not be talking about cuts again. But I, I. It's a, it's a bad time.
What's the, what's the amount on the, the driver's ed, the summer school and twenty first? I know you presented it when you presented the budget.
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's what I thought.
What about the college classes? What, what?
Well, they don't, they don't cost us anything. All they would do would free up teachers to teach other classes. So we could cut a teacher.
And, and if I may say something about a lot of the college classes, we do combine a lot of those. So for example. Um, a science class would be a College Now class, but it's also a required class for graduation. American history is a required class for graduation and we have a section that is the required class plus the College Now together. So the, the cuts, like there, there might be a handful of electives uh that we could talk about, but in terms of. Most of the College Now classes are embedded into uh graduation.
I thought, I, I apologize. I thought they were just combined with AP courses. Um, and a handful of electives is not going to give us enough room to lose a teacher.
I have a question for Crystal. Maybe you can help me. Um, were you involved with um. Requesting the grants that we weren't approved for, for the pre-K? Um, previously and do you think the likelihood of getting? Being able to obtain those grants if they're available are good for not having a program for one year?
Well, honestly, any national grant funding scares me right now, considering the, considering the state of the economy. Um, I am nervous to depend on them. The UP grant, the UPK grants that Lynn and I looked into specifically, as Lynn mentioned, were, they had to be new programs. And that's why we were looking off campus to see what kind of options we had. And they require collaboration with another CBO, another um, another community-based organization. Um, I, I don't know. I, I don't know of any other schools that have not had it and then have, have obtained it a year later. I don't. I'm not familiar with anyone that has done that, so I can't speak to our ability. This, my general knowledge of economics is concerned with any type of federal funding that might come as a consequence of our general economic state.
Thank you.
I mean, I certainly value pre-K. Um, and I certainly am open to try whatever I need to, to get it. Yeah, that's about all I have to say.
I know. The, the sad part is if you, if you leave pre-K and there's, there's two, there's two people that we need to. Lay off. I mean, the money just doesn't, it's not there. Money's just not there.
Does any of the component schools talk about sharing courses to help economize their staffing?
Yeah, they talked about that, but they, you know, they work with those that are closest to them and we're just not. We're just not close to any of them. West Canada Valley wasn't really interested in that. And then we had Herkimer working with Central Valley and Little Falls, but. As our distance from them just precludes that. It doesn't, it doesn't allow for that because we, the teacher just can't get to places and. We might be able to do a kind of a distant learning kind of thing, but that, that's for, this would be, we'd be talking about core courses here. Um, not electives. We'd be talking about core courses if we're gonna try to save things. And um, that's just a whole learning curve that I don't think we can put kids in next year. Nor, and I brought that up at meetings before and nobody, none of the other superintendents have bitten and said. Because I said, can I put a camera on one of your classrooms and then have my student sit in Doggville? And watch your chemistry class? And none of them really bit on that.
Well, that might, was that before the, the money shortage problem came up?
That was before the money shortage problem came up. Yep.
Because you know, we used to do that twenty years ago in Doggville.
We'd still need somebody in that classroom. We would still have to pay, we would have to pay them. I mean, I can look into it, but it's not, you're not going to be saving positions. You might save a quarter of a position by doing that.
Well, and the, and the fact of it is, we need a partner and we can't have distance learning if nobody else wants to do it.
See, the whole county did it before.
Right.
All the schools did it.
Right, they were, I mean, we were doing it when I was in the school still.
They used to have the rating room. You probably had one here, the rating room. And that's how they did it. And it just kinda fell apart after. We got the best technology to be able to do it. That concept kinda fell apart in a lot of school districts. And they don't do that anymore. But it would be, it would be great if we could. With our rural um atmosphere, it's tough to get places if we wanna send kids somewhere. I'll ask, I have a meeting Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, if, if somebody else wants to partner with it, I'm, we're, we're open to anything.
I'll, I'll talk to Tom Shipsky. He's the president of BOCs Board of Education. And uh just talking to him at Richfield Springs, he has sometimes good input on. Issues of the day and uh I'll give him a call if that's all right with everybody else.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I know Richfield Springs recently piloted a program. This was about three years ago. And then they decided not to continue it. A lot of the research says that uh the home district. And if you remember, I think that you probably took uh upper level math with Jim Cooney.
Right.
That uh the home district, the students do fine because it's not any real distance. Um, students don't do quite as well when they're doing it remotely. So.
Uh, Mexico Central School, I went to a seminar at Yoda Saga. About four years, three or four years ago and they loved it up there. I don't know what they're doing different. But they had a, a system up there that, and maybe they don't do it anymore. But that was, uh Mexico Central School was big on that distance learning and. And uh co-opting with other school districts to have one teacher teach multiple classes in different, different school districts. And maybe it didn't work out for them. I never followed it up, but that was, was just something that caught my uh attention when we were there.
Uh, I'm familiar with the local programs. I'm happy to look into what Mexico's doing.
Yeah, if they're still doing it or not. And maybe it didn't work for that, but at the time it sounded quite, quite um lucrative.
I'd be willing to bet that they're doing electives with other school districts. They're not going to do core courses. I bet they're doing American Sign Language to give kids another chance at a different language other than Spanish. They might be doing some, some, uh, maybe, uh, art history class, but I don't think you're going to find them doing, um, core courses, math, science, social studies and English that way. But I could be wrong.
That's worth the investigation.
Ruth, you'll look into that?
Sure.
Because you don't have enough to do.
Well, later on, we'll talk about maybe some specific, uh, staffing cuts and executive process.
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody else got anything for right now? If not, I'm gonna move on. Okay, moving on to reports. Elementary report, Mrs. Christman.
Mrs. Christman is struggling to unmute herself. All right. Just taking a peek, um, at the elementary report. Um, I just want to extend air high fives and air hugs to my staff and to our students. Um, this time period, as we all know, just on a personal level, is so overwhelming just to maintain our own homes and to completely shift the professional obligations of our staff. I commend our staff so much, um, throughout the entire school district. Just to give you a little bit of a sneak, or a, a peek, I included, and, um, I believe as did Ruth, our continuity of learning plan. So we at the elementary level have been very busy identifying strategies and kind of a game plan to move forward with instruction. And this is an ongoing process. Um, we, I will be meeting virtually with my staff again this week so we can reflect on where we've been for the last couple of weeks and see where we, what we need to do to move forward. Um, balancing instruction and maintaining academic skills with the stresses that families are facing is, is a real struggle. And that is something that will be, that we will continue to be ongoing. Um, despite hard work, um, there have been several, several very positive stories that have been shared with me, with staff. I have staff testing technology, um, that they've never used before. And I'm sure that Ruth can relate with that as well with the high school. Um, but I'm just really so proud of my staff. They, they care so much about our kids and they're working so hard to get them the best, the best possible opportunity. On the bottom of that, or on the bottom of my report, I did include some updates, which are actually antiquated at this point, um, at the, at the state ed level in regard to state assessments and implementation of the next generation learning standards, including the science assessment. So there's a little bit more detailed information on the bottom there. And I also included, um, the letter that I taught two parents, um, last week as well as the plan that we are using at the elementary level.
But so what percent of our students are requiring, are requesting like a hard copy of the work that you wanted to do as opposed to electronic?
Um, it depends on the grade level. Um, grades four, five and six are all connected to Google Classroom. And there is probably a little bit under 20% at grades four, five and six that are requiring paper copies. Um, some families have spotty internet services, um, some, some, some have none at all. Um, so that, we're at about 20% for grades four, five and six. Looking at pre-K through three is much more dependent on paper copies. Um, though they can use games and apps to supplement instruction, um, it, they're, they're really just, students are not familiar with, with a Google Classroom, Classroom platform to be able to roll that out after students are no longer in school. Um, by fourth grade familiarity with Google Classroom is, is there. So it was not as much of a transition. So to, to answer your question at grades pre-K through three, almost every student. In fact, every student. We are maintaining and using Class Dojo and Remind as ways to get out some information and communication. But in regard to maintaining equity of instruction, the paper copies are really-
Well, well, not that are we delivering on mail or hand-delivered?
Um, actually, most, at the, at the primary levels, we do have some teachers that are distributing them and actually taking them to homes. Um, we, I have talked to Mr. Stack about in the future incorporating the delivery of instructional materials, perhaps to coordinate along with lunch delivery. Um, but polishing that system of lunch delivery is, is overwhelming in itself. But that is something that I've worked, I've looked at with Mr. Stack. But yes, mailing is the safest and the, the best way that we have at this point. Um, I actually met with another staff member today to help coordinate, to help look at things a little bit differently and coordinate some possibilities because we also have to look at the distribution of all of the students' possessions. And that's something that I'm currently looking at. Any other questions?
Crystal, I have a- Go ahead, Mrs. Christman. I was, I was gonna ask, um, when we can expect to see your response to the Little Falls Principals Challenge?
I saw that.
It was not on my to-do list and actually I just, my email notifications just went off and it was a very lovely email from Mr. Long. Um, but it is, it is on my to-do list for Wednesday or Thursday. So you just control that excitement.
I can. And thank you to everything that you and your staff are doing for our little kids. I've heard nothing but good things and the kids, most of my friends who I've spoken to, the little kids are so excited to get on like a Zoom meeting or anything like that where they get to see their classmates and their teachers.
Yes, and- Thank you. And we started with Zoom and we have slowly transitioned to Google Meet, um, which has had some, some other significant technology things. Because Zoom, you can just send a link and connect, but whereas Google Meet, you need to have a Gmail set up. And obviously, a five-year-old does not have a Gmail set up. Um, but we're overcoming obstacles and moving forward. And the screenshot that I included was our, or the, the picture that's on the front of my report is what our new classrooms look like. And, um, on Dojo, there's so many technological functions too. Um, I stopped by and I was looking at videos that students submitted to Mrs. Gagne. And we were both sobbing hysterically like babies, but it was so amazing to be able to see and hear the kids responding and so excited to be involved. So kudos to staff.
Good job to you and good job to your staff.
Thank you.
And I love the video that you guys made for Facebook with all the teachers hello and, and a, a message for the kids. That was beautiful. That was a tearjerker too.
That's going to be updated this weekend with a few more videos. So I'll, uh, uh, round two will go out this weekend.
That was awesome.
Did your staff talk about like the plan, like say for instance, we don't know if we're going to go back to school, but like the plan for like May 15th to the end of the year as opposed to what you're doing till May 15th?
Yes, and actually, um, one of the curriculum focuses that we started on it and it's, it's pounded out pretty specifically in the continuity plan. But what we have done is we've taken a look at the curriculum from March 17th through the rest of the school year. Because regardless if and when the students come back to school, we have to prioritize curriculum. And what we're looking at in my perspective, and this is something that we're going to reflect on a little bit more with staff on our meeting, or in our meetings on Thursday, is the maintenance of critical skills. Because we know the summer slide is real. We know the loss of student skills just over the summer is so detrimental to students. I'm looking at not only prioritization, prioritization of curriculum, but maintenance of skills. Here is a perfect opportunity to enhance writing, um, communication as best as possible and the social emotional wellbeing as well.
Would there be enough staff time to actually formulate some kind of plans for the summer before end of June? The kids could work on it voluntarily that would help, like a virtual summer school kind of planned ahead of, ahead of school?
Yes, and honestly, we're, we're, I'm going to be honest, we're, we're going one, one period of two weeks at a time. Um, but ultimately, those are things that we would do even during the regular school year, even when we're still in session. Those materials go home with families, especially with reading strategies and reinforcing reading. But absolutely, you're right, that's something that we definitely have to take close consideration.
But we're not going to look at teachers teaching during the summer?
No. For that.
Right.
Without the distractions of kids every day, they might have extra time to actually formulate some far ahead plans, really.
Yeah. And the struggles are all over the spectrum. Because there are obviously families that are still working full-time. There are families that have parents and guardians involved in, in the health field, um, where health and safety is always our first priority.
Mrs. Christman, I had one question.
Sure.
How is this impacting our special needs kids, our, uh, continuity of learning plan?
Um, we have, the key component to the elementary plan is collaboration. And one of the things, honestly, our team, we've been very blessed in that our, our grade level teams have, have been very good and very strong at collaboration. But again, even more so now, they are scheduling their own phone conferences and meetings to ensure that the special education staff is included. Um, I cur, I created a Google platform for everyone to identify their curriculum goals and that is accessible to special education teachers to modify for students with special needs. And we are obviously just rolling, we're just starting that plan and identifying students that struggle, identifying a staff member to pair up with that particular student. It's an, uh, but literally, I can't tell you how many text messages and emails that I get every day from our staff worried about our kids and what we should do in this particular circumstance. Um, it, there's a lot of decision-making, making, uh, decision-making happening every single day to make sure that all students, um, whether they're identified with special needs or not, have their unique learning needs met. But again, there is a ton of collaboration happening between the grade level teachers and special education staff as well as our, our teaching.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's nothing else for Mrs. Christman, went to the high school building, Mrs. Lovett.
Absolutely. Uh, and so, uh, Mrs. Christman and I worked together, really looking at some of the stated plans that were suggested, uh, when that was rolled out on, uh, April 1st. And, uh, one key thing that we, we put into place seven through 12 is a system of support. Uh, you can see in my board report, I talked about access coordinators. And so one piece that we really had been tracking since March 12th was who has access and who doesn't to technology? Who's actually engaging? Who's saying that they have technology, but then they're not engaging? And so at every grade level, there's an access coordinator who's supporting, and that might be with paper copies of things. That might be, okay, you, you need help actually uploading pieces. And so you can see, I, I have TAs and staff at each level. Uh, and we spend hours just going student by student. Who's actually logged in Google Classroom? Who's actually submitting? Oh, hey, get a phone call, give a phone call to that family to support them, uh, through that. And then in some pay, cases, we need to assign case managers to say, uh, the, the motivation level, uh, of engagement. Uh, because a lot of our families are in crisis mode. And so giving the supports through that, uh, assigning the guidance counselor to support through some of the social emotional troubles during this time. And so, uh, this week, we're tracking, uh, as the new instruction went live, uh, where we are and how successful. I had a meeting today with a teacher and all but three students in the whole grade had engaged this week. And so that was, that was great. And so then we'll assign the, the case manager, uh, to that and, uh, and just support, uh, those three students. And how can we help you to be successful during this?
What percent of your high school students don't have access to the internet?
Sure, yeah, it varies by grade level. Uh, and so, uh, on a high grade level end, we're looking at 10%. At one of the grade levels, it's only three students out of the whole grade. So one of the things I do notice different from the elementary is the older students get, the more dependent on technology they already are. And so they have more devices because, you know, that might be a good, you know, 14-year-old gift is a gift of a laptop or, uh, you know, an iPad as they get older. Uh, and so we, I, I am finding that a lot of the students are more independent. And to the families who don't have what they need, we are providing them.
And something, Mrs. Lovett, if I can just interject for one moment. Um, indefinitely, um, also air high fives to Carden Smith and our tech department. Because we have been working very closely with them to try to get devices to those students that need them. Um, we have, at this point, just, we're in the process of distributing, um, Chromebooks to families in high need that they'll borrow from the school district. And Carden has been fantastic in both getting devices, both for our students and for staff. Because there are also several staff that do not have devices that they can work from. Um, but the Google classrooms are phenomenal. May I just show you something? Can I screen share with you for a second?
Yeah.
To show, to show you what kids are seeing. And I promise, Mrs., I'm sorry, I'm really- Can you see my screen?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll see you, we'll see you.
Okay. Um, this, I just want to show you like what the fifth grade classroom looks like. And you can still see Mr. Theory up here. And Mrs. Comstock and Mrs., uh, Mrs. Lawson.
Yeah.
And, but this is, this is what the new fifth grade classroom is looking like. And it allows the kids to go on and ultimately, um, share their experiences and their, their classrooms, the articles, the assignments, videos are posted on there. And it really is an amazing opportunity for our students. And now, Mrs. Lovett, I promise I'll stop talking.
Nice, nice.
One part, one-
Oh, go ahead.
Part of this is that maybe some of this technology will at least be more familiar with the students when they come back to school.
Ruth, I just wanted to say that your weekly, the Daljil Weekly video was over the top fantastic. It gave just the right amount of information. It was such a good tool and I'm so glad that you'll be doing that each week.
Thank you so much. Carden just walked in to talk to me about my microphone. So, thank you, thank you very much. And looking ahead toward next week, uh, we actually already have some content reported, uh, talking about features for the guidance department. And especially in terms of the upperclassmen who are looking at, uh, you know, SATs. What does that mean, college applications? Uh, and so, so that's some of the-
And then I also wanted to ask Hannah a question as our only student here. Um, just asking about your experience and your sister's experience and how, and how all of this is going for you guys and your friends.
I think it's going good. Um, I went through Miss Lovett's plan of presenting material on Friday for the following week. And I think that is kind of most important too, because it helps plan the week. I know a lot of, uh, seniors are working as well because they're essential for their jobs. So a lot of people were struggling with like assignments handed out that day and do that day. So hopefully with being prepared, we'll be able to manage it a little better. But overall, it's going good.
Right, I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
I just have to say that an empty school is a very, very busy school. So the principals and the teachers and even the people here working in the offices and the people preparing lunches are extremely busy. More busy, I think, than they were before because this is all so different. And they're working very hard to get things done and doing things for our kids. I'm very proud of everybody and I, I feel honored to be here.
I just wanted to ask Mrs. Lovett one question about our graduating class.
Sure.
Are we going to, are there, we may have had some students in jeopardy. Are we going to, um, have that still happening? Or do, do we see a good upswing of, uh, graduating students?
I think there are two factors going on right now. Uh, for two of our seniors who were looking at, uh, being in jeopardy because of Regent's exams, this was a gift. And, uh, Mr. Getner and I have been working with those individuals saying, okay, all right, that is now off the board. This is what you need to focus on. Uh, and has given new hope for those individuals. Uh, for, uh, the students right now, and just as Hannah has identified, a lot of our seniors are starting to think ahead and getting jobs. And working quite a bit. And so now the struggle is going to be really making sure that we're keeping track on a week-by-week basis. Are they doing what they need for course credit so that they can walk the stage?
Wha- what's, what's it look like for the number of possible graduates right now?
Mm-hmm. And so, uh, I believe there are 65 students. And so right now, I think all 65 have a great shot. Uh, at doing that, so.
Thank you.
Has there been any more discussion, Ruth, about the complexity of, or the way graduation will look or not look?
Right. And so, uh, and actually I had a senior parent ta- uh, could give me a call today, you know, ju- just wanting to hear. And that's why I emphasize that in the announcement. Graduation is not canceled. It just might look different. And what we are just waiting for are what are those regulations that are going to be in place? Uh, in June. Um, I was encouraged in today, Cuomo's address today, where he started talking about a regional approach. And I looked at those counties, had a little bit of hope, uh, but we'll see what happens in June.
So the New York part until May 15th, does that mean school is out till May 15th or?
Correct.
Right.
Yes. Yeah.
At least.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else for Mrs. Lovett, we'll move on to the Dean of Students Athletic Director Report. Some of the information's outdated now because we, Governor Cuomo's extended everything, but, uh, any questions we need to pass along or possibly could get answered? If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the Building and Grounds Report. Questions on that?
Did they put out their snow, snow shovels away yet? They might have to get them back out.
Yeah, I did hear it's supposed to snow tonight.
Again.
I see, uh, Dave Redmond's right-hand man is going to retire. We got someone that's capable of abilities to replace him coming up?
Yeah.
We haven't, um, talked about it yet. Chuck, um, just Ted handed in his retirement recently, so we would have to post for that job and see who applies.
It's a case where we really need to replace him, right?
Well, he's our only groundskeeper. So, we only have one.
I have to buy some goat, that's all.
We only have one groundskeeper.
Maybe we can combine a couple of positions, who knows?
Maybe some part-time people, maybe one of them might want it.
Yeah, we're trying to look at everything, everything we possibly can. So.
Have any schools ever had like a service to do their lawn in lieu of an employee, like people that do that for a living?
I can check into it.
Well, I mean, I'm just mentioning Billy Bailey.
Like a landscaper.
They generally wouldn't have the right equipment probably, but.
For the right money, they all have the right equipment.
Yeah.
That's the problem. Okay, if there's nothing else for the Building and Grounds Report, move on to the Transportation Report. Looks like, uh, everything's still moving along there. Inspection wise on the buses. Any, uh, questions we need to pass along? Comments?
I'd like to let you know that we're now delivering 2,300 meals a week. And Transportation Department is a big part of that.
Delivering how many meals, did you say?
2,300.
And all of those meals are being accepted?
Is that, is that just lunches or is that breakfast and lunch?
Breakfast and lunch.
Wow.
I'm sorry, Julie.
And all of those meals are being accepted? That's how many students or how many actual meals we're preparing? That's not.
No, that's for those who, who are requesting meal.
They're eating that much.
2,300, yes.
Crazy. That's crazy.
Now, would their program go into the summer even if there's no summer school?
We haven't, we haven't heard. It's right now, the application is through June 30th.
Because there's a slight, a slight possibility there won't be a summer playground program for the village in town of Salisbury, but I didn't know if they could still do the meal program without a pro- their program or not.
Right now for the pandemic, the application says until the pandemic is over or until June 30th. So I don't know if that would be extended past June 30th.
That's probably another question that's on the governor's desk.
I also want to say thank you to the drivers on Joe's report because Joe and, um, a couple, a few of our drivers have been helping with delivering these meals and they're they're up here twice a week helping package and get the trips ready. So thanks again to all the cafeteria staff and the drivers for getting all these meals out. We really appreciate all, all the work they're doing and Joe and Anthony are heading up those departments and they're doing a great job.
Are we okay with the personal protective equipment that they all need to use?
For right now, Jessica, I think we are. I have, I, I got a, I got a memo from Jessica, uh, last Friday. Said they had a line on where we could get some masks and they were $5 each. And I said, whoa. Let's try to find something different. And I was able to find something different. We have 120 masks coming. Um, I think this weekend they'll be delivered to my house. And we have a line on them. If they're good quality for a dollar 25, we can order 1,000 of them for less than a dollar each.
Can I, can I ask one more question? Um, 2,300 meals, that's a lot of meals. Are these just for students?
Yeah.
Well, there's five days a week that they're for, really.
Okay. Okay. So that's per week?
Not per day. Twenty, 2,300 meals a week, a week.
Okay.
Like 400 a day.
So 10, 10 meals per child.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, also including reports is, uh, expenditure and revenue analysis. This provided us monthly. There's no other questions. A motion to accept reports A through F as presented.
So move, die back, bro.
Second, Mary Lou.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old business, uh, district calendar for next year.
That could change, Joe.
We've got to adopt something.
What is added onto this calendar from what you, when you saw it last month? Is two half-days that we'll use for professional development on January 29th and May 14th. Otherwise, the calendar looks the same as it did last time.
Uh, motion to adopt the calendar for school year 2020, 2021.
Don't move.
Your sound's off, Teresa.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, veterans exemption discussion, that's still on the calendar. We were hoping to be out of this so we could have, uh, representative, um. Uh, Jessica, did you find out more information on this? I know, I think you did and I.
I, I, what I did, you can hear me, right?
Yep.
Um, I requested the information from the counties that you guys asked me for what VAs are currently claiming the exemption for the land taxes. Um, I did receive one back on, and then the other one told me it might be a little while because they were, um, they didn't have the staff in the office. So they were kind of like what Jen was saying, kind of doing one in, one out. Um, and they were a little back, backed up with other things. Um, they did let me know that, um, the date has passed, the deadline has passed for the exemption for the 2021 school year. So, um, you know, we didn't have to rush in making a decision because it wouldn't be till the 21, 22 that we would actually um, have that avail- available if you guys wanted to move up forward with it.
What's the typical date on that?
He did not tell me the, the date. But I can ask.
Yeah, just so we got an idea because obviously we're going to want to talk about this.
Yes.
Going forward, once you get all your information and then just so we have a date.
Yeah, Mr. Novak did call, um, Sandy and I called him back to just let him know that um, I was not able to get all the information to you guys that you had requested. Um, and he was completely understanding and um, I told him that we would update it and keep it on the board agenda for next month as long, you know, because we wouldn't be able to come to an agreement tonight.
Something interesting that Jessica also mentioned during the finance committee meeting is that should we adopt this? Basically, the, the amount that the veteran is not paying gets absorbed by all of the other taxpayers. So we're basically making a decision on how much taxes the rest of our residents are paying, which I find so like, I don't know why they have us making that decision. But I, I, I thought that was an interesting piece of information that Jessica had mentioned during the finance committee meeting.
Does it have to be board approval or it can be public approval? Can we have a vote? Publicly?
I think it's just board approval.
I think the law says the board has to approve it.
Okay.
Many veterans get, uh, reduction in their village, town, and county taxes currently. Based on the time they were in military somewhat.
Yeah, the, the rate's different depending on when they served. Um, there's four different brackets. So, but Jessica's getting that information, uh, how many, how many, um, veterans in our district are actually taking advantage of that so we could, she could kind of calculate out how much, uh, revenue would have to be shifted around amongst the other taxpayers so we can make an informed decision. So, more to come on that.
Yeah, and I can get that date too, Scott, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. Just, just so we have, just so we know going forward what the date is.
Jess, could you also find out if, if we can put it on as a referendum on our uh, vote and then the board approve that referendum, whatever the public decides?
Yeah, I can, um, contact, we have a, I have a lawyer contact that's specific on, on like taxes that helped us, um, a little bit ago. So I can ask her.
Thank you.
Okay. Social worker through the neighborhood center discussion.
Well, the last time we spoke about this, I was waiting for a contract. And then we closed school. So I do not have a contract. We don't really need one right now. I'm anticipating that next school year, um, this will have a contract and we will have a social worker here through the neighborhood center who can service kids, um, all of our kids. Uh, because we are the ones that are contracting for them. You know, remember the last time we spoke? The social worker we get through the neighborhood center, um, can only see kids on Medicare. And, um, this, this, um, contract would give that social worker the right to come in and work for us per diem. And would be able to see any child that we ask him or her to see. So that's a stay tuned for next school year because we're not, we won't see it this year now.
Okay. On the new business. Uh, cooperative bidding resolution with the RIC for next year. I don't have a copy of that. Did we have a copy of that?
It was, yes. Yes, we did. It says Madison, O'Naita at the top.
I don't have it.
Well, you can make a motion to, to approve it as presented in a fact.
Uh, I found it. It was stuck to the last one.
Come on, Scott.
I know it.
Just stick your finger.
Okay. Motion to accept the.
I'll make the motion to accept it as presented by Max, bro.
Let me make a second, uh, to the motion, Bob Schmidt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Health and Welfare Services contract with South Colony Central School.
So about three months ago, I received, um, communication from South Colony Schools that said that one of our district residences was, uh, going to school there. And they wanted us to confirm that, uh, that we would pay for their, um, health and welfare services, which would be any kind of nurse, uh, physician, uh, OTPT, things like that. I found it hard to believe that somebody that lives in Daljville was going to Albany for school. Um, I checked around, I asked people. Nobody was quite sure if this person was living in Daljville. I had, had a very brief and not a very nice conversation on her part with the student's mother. Who, um, I just asked her to present a bill. If you can give us a bill, uh, that you pay for the, for the home in Daljville. Uh, an electric bill or something that you would, that we would be happy to sign. And, um, about two months later, I received back from South Colony that she had presented the water bill for the home to them, but she refused to let me see it. So, um, as far as I know, this family, I called this, then I called the village and I said, is this water bill in this mom's name? And she said, yes, it is. And I said, it's being paid every quarter. And she said, yes, it is. And, um, so there's a contract for us to pay for his health and welfare services.
So this was a former Dalso resident, a current Dalso resident that chooses to go to school at South County Central School for some reason?
Right.
Is there an educational reason or is it just they moved with the father or the mother, stepmother or?
I, I'm comfortable in executive session talking about an individual's success. Yep.
Okay.
There's a story behind the case, right?
Okay.
When we're talking about specific students, we really need to do that in executive session.
Okay.
So a motion to approve this contract with South Colony Central School to provide this service.
I guess I saw move if we are obligated to.
Should we talk about it here?
Or can we hold off on that until after executive decision?
Do it after.
Okay, we're going with to after executive session. Make a note. Uh, resolution to approve agreement for services between Dalso Central School District and SEI Design Group for our capital project that was approved by the voters in February.
Is that, is that what it is, Jess, or is this our heating, emergency heating project?
It's everything. It's a contract for our architect and engineer co- company for any, any services that we need.
Okay.
The architect or engineer to look into.
Okay.
You know, it goes back before the emergency HVAC. It starts back because we didn't have a contract and covers anything going forward.
So this has gone back and forth between our attorney and our architect for several months. And this was the final version that our attorney said if we were satisfied with the fee schedule, all of the, um, legalese in the contract he was, he was satisfied with.
Is there a dollar amount on this? Or just a a retainer?
There's a lot of dollar amounts, Mr. Schmidt.
There are. There are specific dollars for specific items, uh, per hour.
Saw that in the bank. I saw their hourly rates. I didn't know if we should, should try to put a dollar amount on this or not.
Well, it's usually 20% of a contract. You know, so if you look on page 23.
All right.
So 11.5 So eleven point five where we're looking at schematic design phase at this point, they are working on. The engineer's been here for several times actually for our new project coming up, our million dollar project. And, um, he will be putting together his design and his, his, um, schematics. And giving that to our architect and then they will be working on their designs. And it's just a typical twenty percent, twenty percent of the one million dollars, twenty percent of what the bid will, will go for.
That's two hundred thousand dollars.
Yep. Doing your own business.
Don't worry, we get aid back eighty-seven percent.
When do we get that?
What's that?
The way you worded it, the way you worded it sounded like there was more to it than just the, the. Capital project, but this is just the capital project, correct?
Well, it's a, it's a contract with the engineering firm because they did the emergency contract because we weren't under contract with any. Um, architect at the time. So go back to that.
And for example, we have to do every five years, we have to do a building condition survey. So we're going to use them for that.
Alright.
So, Mr. Schmidt, twenty, uh, page twenty-two. Article eleven compensation for, this is specific for our twenty twenty capital improvement project that our voters approved for us. So we are looking at, uh. Free referendum services of eighty-two thousand five hundred. It's all your drawings and your, uh, communication and your forms to be filled out with state ed. And. Replacement of the unit ventilators of nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
And what, what we had talked about before, just a second to go on page twenty-three, that is for basic services. Supplemental and additional services to the architects consultants. But our attorney put this over, he, he didn't question the amounts per hour. He just, of course, he can't approve those. But he approved everything else that went back and forth for a couple of months. And, uh, this is a pretty typical contract that we've had with engineer, uh, architect firms before. And, uh, we have been very, very happy working with this architect for much more so than the people we had to work with when I first came in last year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve the agreement. Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, building condition survey agreement that was emailed to us this afternoon.
There's an option one and an option two.
Go ahead, Jessica.
What do you want me to say?
Okay, Jessica and I met with the architect, um, about this every, every five years. And this is the year that Dowjville Central School has to put together a building. Building survey, building condition survey. And that's what we worked out, when we worked with our, um, facilities committee last year. Uh, that's what we worked off of when deciding that the unit ventilators were probably the most important things to get done. So we have to put together this new building condition survey. We have to have information to New York State by November. And this is the contract for that. Uh, we went through and we talked about the different additions. It's, it's a price per square foot, which brings us to a. Twenty thousand, sorry. Twenty thousand three hundred dollars, I think it was.
Twenty thousand one hundred.
Okay, twenty thousand one hundred. So that's per square foot just for the building condition survey. And they had asked for a listed, not asked, but they gave us a list of nine or ten extras that we could have. Uh, Jessica and I met with Dave Redman, our head of facilities. And, um, we kind of, we kind of said that. One out of ten is what we needed. We wanted to look at, um, having all our drawings, um, digitally recorded. So we didn't have duplicates and we had, um, drawings from the inception of the school district that were available on one disk. On, I was gonna say disk drive, on one thumb drive.
Because it wouldn't say we're adamant that we can put it on CDs. I was like, um, no, we're compared to, I have CDs like yours anymore.
You could put it on CDs. I wouldn't be able to view it, but you could put it on CDs. We'll have that all, we'll have a CD in the, in the vault, Jessica, we'll have a thumb drive in the vault that will, um.
It will be in the quality.
Other thumb drive, we'll have a, a nice recording of all the different schematics for all the projects from the building, from the district's inception. So we asked them to put that on our quote. The other thing that we talked about is something for, um, an energy survey, which we asked him. He said usually the high needs districts will get one hundred percent of that energy survey reimbursed. And we asked him to check with NYSERTA to see if we were on their list of high needs district because we certainly think we are a high needs district. And he has confirmed that we are. So we should have one hundred percent of that paid by NYSERTA. Um, Jessica's, Jessica's opinion, we talked to him today and my opinion along with Jessica's is we. Have the basic building condition survey. We do, um, copying of the schematics onto a thumb drive. And we also go with a NYSERTA. At a level of, like, nine thousand eight hundred dollars. We, we had another quote for a lot more money. Uh, what was it, Jess? Do you remember?
I don't, I don't remember.
It was up to forty thousand dollars. Now, we might get paid back from NYSERTA for that, but we didn't, you know, we didn't want to really chance that. Jessica had put thirty thousand dollars into the budget for this building condition survey and she's comfortable with going with, um. Proposal number one.
No, we get aid back on that too, Jessica?
Um, yes, we'll get our building aid back on our building condition survey.
So out of the thirty-six thousand dollars, we're responsible for about five thousand of it.
And Ruth, I think you were asking before, like, when we get building aid back, it's an expense driven age. So we get, we'll get it in the following year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is the bus garage included in this building survey?
Yes.
Yes.
Garage and James A. Green School, which is the entire school district.
Okay.
Every building that the school owns.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the building condition survey agreement? There's no other questions, a motion to accept the agreement.
Motion.
Make a motion.
Mrs. Zizo made the motion.
Well, they came from Mrs. Zizo and then also Mr. Schmidt, correct?
Yep, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, no informational stuff this month. Everything that's on the agenda. Uh, board forum, start with Mr. Maxwell.
Well, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but we probably will be looking at a little bit of lost revenue in next year because of North Main Street and the village because we're in the process of perhaps. Purchasing all those properties of the village in the future. So there'd be plenty households of income or taxes that we won't get anymore. So that's something that we think in the more for the future.
Say that again, Bob, the village is going to purchase those North Main Street houses?
There is a possibility that they might and then they'll be taken down. Depends if the people are agreeable to it. Most of seventeen out of twenty are probably agreeable to it. And the village has been struggling more for their meetings and we're doing, we're doing better on the meetings than the village has done so far. I had to use my phone and my computer. I couldn't hear on my computer and I could hear on my phone. So I had both of them on last night and night, so I was on the screen twice. So we're doing pretty good with the meetings so far here. That's all I have.
Okay, Mrs. Zizo.
I just wanted to thank you all. Can you hear me?
Barely.
Can you hear me? How about now?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to thank you all for all your hard work and, um, for keeping the connections with the kids and trying to keep the curriculum going and all that hard work that, that you do behind the scenes that we, we don't always see as parents on the other end because, you know, we're struggling. It's not easy parenting and trying to work and homeschool. And it just blows my mind how much work that we take granted that the, the teachers and the staff do for our children every single day. While we're, we're busy working. It's crazy and, um, it's ridiculously hard to try to juggle that, especially for, I mean, with three children from my point of view. Uh, so I'm incredibly grateful for all of the work that you've done and all of the work you continue to do to, to help make this easier for us. Um, because it's hard and we appreciate all the materials, all the meetings, all the efforts. Every, the text messages, the videos, just the parade, all of it is just, it really, really means a lot. Because I, I don't even know how I began to do this without all of that support and, uh, I am one hundred percent grateful. And, uh, and Lynn and Jessica and everyone else that's still working hard, um, at school. You know, while we are dealing with all this mess. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Julie.
Mr. Schmidt.
Julie said about everything I wanted to say, I just wanted to, uh, congratulate our tenured teachers too for their accomplishments. And to thank all the frontline people who've been dealing with COVID virus, that's doctors, nurses, first responders, our administrators and teachers and staff at the school and the twenty-three hundred meals a week that you guys are putting out to our students and students. Um, I just want to say, um, we'll get through this, but we got to do it together. That's all I got.
Mrs. Huddleston.
Hi, everybody. I'm happy to see everybody. Um, I first want to congratulate Erica and Deanna on their tenure. Um, I want to thank all the teachers that spent their two or three hours driving through Dowjville, Salisbury and Stratford waving to the students. I also want to thank the teachers who particip- participated in the video. If you haven't seen it yet, you might want to look at it and I'm hoping that the end of the week, we can see the next part of it. Um, I want to thank Crystal and her entire staff. Um, I'm so proud of them. Also, Mrs. Levitt and her staff and also Mrs. Levitt for creating the Dowjville Weekly. It's amazing. I can't wait till I see the next one next week. Um, also congratulated to the senior drum line. I would have never known that, um, the Lasher, Ms. Lasher and Ms. Williams were the, on the senior drum line if it wasn't for Mrs. Levitt's Dowjville Weekly. Um, now, last but not least, congratulations to our DCS top seniors. We are so very proud of all of you. Everybody stay safe. Okay, and thank you. That's it for me. Oh, and I do want one more thing. Jessica and Lynn, I can't thank you two enough. That's all I'm going to say. You're both amazing. That's it for me.
Thank you very low.
Mrs. Williams.
Um, more of the same, just congratulations to our tenured teachers. Uh, we can't wait to congratulate you in person. Um, congratulations to our top seniors. Hannah, I was looking forward to that dinner. Um, and I hope that, um, you have something prepared for the next time our families can get together because you are going to give a speech that night, my dear. Uh, uh, to our seniors in general, um, our hearts are with you. You're learning a hard lesson in adulthood, um, which is sometimes life hands you circumstances that you don't like. You don't want it that way and it's extremely disappointing. Um, I have no doubt in my mind that this experience is going to make you well that much better. Um, and stronger adults, um, much sooner than maybe kids that graduated in years past. Um, but I also just wanted to say that Ruth and, uh, Mrs. Rowan are working hard to make sure we can make as much of this senior year for you as possible. So hang in there. Um, also a big thank you to our cafeteria and transportation staff for those meal deliveries. Um, and, and to our teachers who are reaching out to kids regularly, checking on them just to say hi, just to make sure that they have what they need on top of teaching them, uh, the things that they need. So we're just so proud of all of you and grateful to all of you and, uh, everybody stay healthy, wash your hands. That's it.
Mrs. Prestajacamo.
And I also have more of the same. Lots of thanks. I'm so proud of our school and all the work that everybody's doing to keep the students and community connected and fed and all taken care of. So thank you for all that you're doing. Um, congratulations to our tenured teachers and everybody stay well.
How about Hannah Stack? I usually start with you, Hannah. We'll get you at the end.
Just thank yous. I know from the student perspective, we're grateful that we're still learning and we're all hoping we'll be back in school soon. I know for sure for seniors, we're all anxious. But just to, it's nice to still be informed. So thank you, everyone.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to reiterate everything that everybody already said, uh. This time of, of trying, teachers are still teaching in a way they've never had to teach before. Uh, the administration is doing a, doing an excellent job of trying to help make sure that all the students are getting the services they're required. And, uh, and everything they need, the support staff and delivering the lunches. And, uh, it's just. In circumstances like these, it's nice that, uh, you normally get to see the best in everybody. So that's all I've got. Um, need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session, Bob Schmidt.
All in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, everybody, we'll jump on another link.
Okay, back to regular session. Uh. Mary Lou can't see you.
I only see her, right?
Right. Um. There are no CSC CPSC minutes this month, so we don't have to do anything with that.
Carden's going to go get her picture.
Okay. We'll give her a minute, that way she can vote here.
She can vote, yeah. Well, there's Jess, so she's got her on there, because Jess is in the same office.
And it froze, look where it froze.
Oh, we had it for a second, went away.
There it is.
That's not Mary Lou.
Her hands over the monitor, I mean.
Is she hiding from us?
I think we're streaming right now too, right?
Yes.
Alright.
Technical difficulties, please.
There's nobody paying attention to this part of it.
That's what happens when it's 10:15. Been a long meeting.
There she is.
There's Mary Lou.
She's muted.
Unmute her, though. You're muted.
Just gotta unmute yourself, Mary Lou.
Carden, she's gone.
Oh, she's back.
She's muted.
Enable video. You don't have to vote in sign language if your kids are here.
Well, if they can see her, she can vote, right? Because it's a hand race.
Yeah, if we could see her, she could just raise her hand to vote, yea or nay.
Okay.
Alright, personnel. Motion to approve as presented sixteen A one through six. All in favor, or need a motion first.
So moved. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Julie made the motion, Bob Maxwell second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Sixteen B. Number one, need a motion.
Make a motion. Bob Schmidt.
Somebody second that. All in favor.
Aye.
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 Non-resident requests for 2020-2021 school year.
Need a motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, upcoming meeting will be a budget.
Mr. Hongo?
Huh?
You want to go ahead and announce the Friday?
Yeah, we might as well, right?
Right, Friday and Tuesday.
So Friday, the 24th day, April 5pm, will be a budget meeting discussion. Uh, Tuesday, 28th of April, uh, potential budget vote, it's definitely a budget meeting, uh, 6pm. And motion to adjourn.
That's a budget adoption.
Adoption.
Yeah, not the budget vote.
Right, adoption, we, well, we had to vote on to adopt it.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
No move.
Make a motion.
Aye.
Jennifer.
Everyone wants to leave.
Aye.
Have a great night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Elena, thank you.
What's that?
You were good on that one?
Yes, I have, um, Jennifer Williams and Bob Schmidt.
Okay, sounds good, thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Have a good night, stay safe.
Good night, thank you, Elena, thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Carden.